Dr. Spire, will you lead us in prayer, please?
I never really thought we'd come this morning as we're divided by decision makers and we'll make the decision for this county and for other state and national affairs we're involved in for the betterment of our community and justice at large. Pray your best upon all those who were your attendants here and those with good God being attendants. And we pray that you bless us in every other way that we are in need of these and all blessings we have in your name, Jesus Christ, amen.
I pray that Jesus Christ, in the holy river, where it stands, the one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, infinite, and ever.
Appreciate everybody coming. And we'll get right on with the agenda thing.
We have three additions to the agenda items, section four, ten, eleven, and twelve, we're asking the commission to add to the against.
Y'all heard the recommendation.
Board pleasure.
All for a motion to approve the agenda with the additions as spelled out by Mr. Dean.
Second, have a motion and second add three items to the agenda, all in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, carry on.
First item on the agenda under section one, Mr. Westbrook is the employee of the month, and I believe that Lindsey Dara is going to do that presentation.
All right, I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas Jackson County has established an employee of the month program to recognize one employee to represent the various departments. And whereas Lucas Mayo has began his employment with the county on November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, he currently serves as the grants and contracts manager for Jackson County in administration and has been selected for employee of the month for November twenty twenty-five for the standards that he has displayed in the performance of his job duties. And whereas Lucas is a hardworking, dedicated, and knowledgeable employee, every day he goes beyond, above and beyond his job duties. He strives for excellence every single day. And whereas Lucas is dedicated to the mission of being for Jackson County, Lucas consistently demonstrates exceptional dedication, professionalism, and a deep commitment to public service. Lucas plays a pivotal role in securing and managing critical funding that directly supports the county's growth and resilience. His meticulous attention to detail, deep understanding of regulatory compliance, and proactive approach to grant management have resulted in the successful acquisition and administration of numerous high-impact grants. These efforts have brought significant resources to our community, supporting everything from infrastructure improvements to cybersecurity initiatives. And whereas beyond his technical expertise, Lucas is a team player who is always willing to support colleagues, share knowledge, and find innovative solutions to complex challenges. His calm demeanor, integrity, and strong work ethic make him an invaluable asset to the county. Lucas's contributions often happen behind the scenes, but his impact is far-reaching. His work not only ensures financial accountability, but it also helps build a stronger, more sustainable future for Jackson County. He embodies the county's mission of for Jackson, for future, and for you. Now, therefore, be proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Jackson County, Florida commends and congratulates Lucas Mayo on his selection as employee of the month for November twenty twenty-five.
Chairman.
Yes.
Known Mr. Mayo for his whole life and I'd make it very honored to be able to offer a motion to approve Mr. Mayo, Lucas Mayo is the employee of the month, authorize a check in the amount of two hundred dollars. Doctor proclamation and authorize you as the chairman to sign. And I know how much Lucas likes public speaking, so I'd like to give him about thirty minutes to give us a speech.
I second it, but I have a question.
Okay.
Have we ever recognized anybody that talk before?
Well, going out of camera.
Motion to second to approve, all in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, going back to work, thank you, we appreciate that.
Move along. Next item on the agenda is board recognition of employees for time of service, and I believe Mr. Regster is going to do that.
Martin.
Light shining off that head.
So we're gonna recognize. We ain't going by your guy given name, we're going by what we call Robert David Stan. David started with the county November twenty-third of two thousand and five, so we're gonna recognize twenty years of service. And David married to Tammy, they've been married two and a half years, together they have six children and twelve grandchildren. David enjoys fishing camp, fishing, camping, and going to the mountains. He has given name as Robert, but he is known to everyone as David, which is Hebrew in origin, meaning beloved. David started with the county on the mixing crew running the dozer and has been working as the district five supervisor since two thousand and twenty-three. Between then, then and now, he's run almost everything at Road and Bridge, such as backhoe grader, transfer truck, bucket truck, anything you can imagine out there. The character quality we chose for David is flexibility versus resistance. And that's not becoming attached to ideas or plans which could be changed by my authorities. While David plans on day-to-day activities in his district, he is always flexible to change and do whatever task comes about. David is not only a supervisor, he is willing to run any equipment needs to get the job done. He also deals with various changes without hesitation and with a positive attitude. And the benefit from that is David's flexibility allows him to not just look straight ahead, but at all his surroundings. He is a team player and is willing to help others when needed. Thanks for twenty years.
You're welcome. To a point of personal privilege, I know we've been knowing him since, the same way that Commissioner Donald proved. I've been knowing him since he was a little bitty fella. And he never, he never fails to respond when I call him or ask him something or tell him something we got to do, and he'll tell him, well, we'll get that later on today or tomorrow. So that's pretty good. We appreciate you working for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Yeah, no, we didn't clap for that.
Good morning, commissioners, I'd like to invite Ms. Chelsea Walters Wingate. Ms. Chelsea Walters Wingate, we're celebrating her ten years of service to Jackson County under the Fire Rescue Department. The name Chelsea has a French meaning bright or shining, she's married to Ricky, who retired from Jackson County Fire Rescue, and together they have one daughter and they have one baby on the way. In her spare time, she is also the director of the EMT program at the Florida Panhandle Technical College in Chipley. And if she has any time left after all this, she enjoys spending time with her family, hunting, and fishing. Chelsea began her career with Jackson County Fire Rescue as an EMT firefighter. After being promoted to paramedic firefighter, Chelsea returned to school, earning her associate's degree, bachelor's degree, and master's degree in organizational management leadership and emergency services from the University of Florida. She's the only employee in our department that has a master's degree, and she currently holds the position of battalion chief paramedic and supervises a shift. Additional duties include maintaining our capital assets in our department and our uniforms. The character quality that I chose for Chelsea is orderliness versus disorganization. Arranging myself and my surroundings to achieve the greatest efficiency. There is no one more organized in our department other than Chelsea, and she knows that. Keeping track of all of our capital assets, their service, their preventative maintenance in uniforms, has to have somebody who is orderly and Chelsea to fit the bill. Whenever a task arises, Chelsea has a way to make sure all is organized and placed into a spreadsheet, email, calendar invite, or operation system. Though I'm typically an organized person, Chelsea's orderliness helps to keep our department on the right track and moving in the right direction. She maintains and keeps every detail filed in the correct place and never misses a date. Her orderliness is a reminder to stay organized myself, not just in my mind, but on paper. Chelsea, we congratulate you for twenty years of service. Yep, you want to get pictured down afterward?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I've got two today, I'm gonna start off with Heather Williams, Heather is celebrating her five years of service, starting back in September of twenty twenty. Name Heather is from Ingles word, Heather variety of small shrubs with pink and white flowers, which is commonly grown in rocky areas is derived from Middle English Heather. Heather is born and raised in Jackson County and was married to her high school sweetheart Josh and have three kids together. Heather has had an extensive career in public service from working as a dispatcher at the Jackson County Sheriff's Office, has also worked at the Golson Elementary School prior to joining our team at Public Works. Today, I chose the word boldness versus fearfulness, confidence that what I have to say or do is true, right, and just. Heather often faces adversity in her role and has to take a bold stance to defend the county and our operations, dealing with upset utilities customers or angry citizens with their animal issues on a daily basis is a very daunting task, and Heather has to stick to the rules and operations set forth by our policies and procedures. Being bold and working through situations ensures fairness and guarantees each situation is handled consistently. Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Next up, I got Jeffrey Register. Who's also celebrating five years of service, started in October of twenty twenty. Jeffrey's name origin traces back to old German languages and evolved from names like Joffre and Godfrey, which were popular in medieval Europe. The name was later adapted into Old French as Jeffrey being become Jeffrey in English. Jeffrey's been with Road and Bridge Department his entire time with the county and brings a wealth of knowledge from road construction field as well as many years in the automotive industry. Jeffrey started as a district supervisor and is currently serving as the Road and Bridge Superintendent. For Jeffrey today, I chose alertness versus unawareness. Being aware of that which is taking place around me so that I can have the right responses. Being the supervisor of the largest county department comes with a lot of unique challenges. For starters, there are a lot of moving parts and projects that need to be tracked at any given time, so we can provide information to citizens or commissioners. Jeffrey does this in stride and never seems to get overwhelmed with any task regardless of the complexity. This trait is extremely helpful to keep his employees on task and his superiors informed. Jeffrey, we appreciate your service.
On behalf of the board, we appreciate every one of you, thank you for working for us, thank you for coming to work on time and staying late, thank you very much.
Mr. Westbrook, the second, section two of the agenda is public hearing. This is a second reading and adoption of revision to the Jackson County Comprehensive Plan by ordinance. We're asking the chair to open a public hearing and ask for comments, and then if they're done, or list active comments, close the public hearing so that we can move to the adoption of the ordinance.
I'm ready to do it. Any comment, any, any question?
Someone online.
I can't hear you, but speak up.
Recognize someone that's listening online.
Fred Mary is someone online that would wish to comment on this ordinance. I take that as a negative. Westbrook, I'm asking that I be able to read the ordinance by title only and ask the board to take action to approve the ordinance. An ordinance of Jackson County, Florida adopting updates to comprehensive planning, providing for serviceability, and providing for an effective dance.
That's pretty short of.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt the proposed change to the Jackson County Comprehensive Plan by ordinance and authorize the chairman to sign.
Second.
Motion and second to approve, all in favor, raise your right hand. Yes, sir, you want to speak, go right ahead.
Does that legal review at all?
Sure.
Does it have legal review?
None.
None, okay, thank you.
Can we start again, you ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. All in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, move along.
Okay, the, moving into section three, Mr. Westbrook, Community Development. Request boards and view of variance request from Jackson County Code Ordinance is section forty-two dash four fifty-five. This is a variance request by Ms. Philly to have a structure within twenty feet of the right-of-way. It was presented to the Community Development Section for review. The Community Development Section reviewed the proposed variance, and it was not in compliance with the county code. It was presented to the Planning Commission on November the third. The Planning Commission conferred with the decision made by Community Development, and it was recommended by the Planning Commission to not allow the variance.
I have a question. Is there a fence guarding that place, is there a fence where it can't be seen?
This is the variance request to place a structure within twenty foot of the right-of-way, this is not the one that has the fence around it.
Okay.
Offer a motion to go along with the recommendation of the planning zone and board to deny the variance request. Motion.
So she, this lady is, she's wanting to move a building within twenty feet of the property.
Yes.
Which is, which is the roadway. Right away. This says Highland Circle. Is that it, is that gonna be in the Highlands or in Compass Lake?
Ms. Kim.
Come forward where we can hear you, we can't hear you unless you speak up.
This property is in Compass Lake in the Hills subdivision.
But the road in front of it is Highland Circle?
Um, yes, and that is in, that is in Compass Lake in the Hills.
From what I'm reading on this, is her reasoning for this is she's, she's not, I shouldn't say elderly, she's an older person. And it was just more convenient for her to, she's got a bee, she does bees, and the thing is, you don't have to walk as far and totally just mention supplies.
I concur, I agree.
And as I can see, the shed is currently located behind the house, and she's probably not moving it roughly about a hundred feet closer to the road and and closer to the road at the forty-foot distance required.
That is correct.
Yeah, from my question.
I second. Got a motion and a second to approve or disapprove of it. All in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed. Die.
Next item, Mr. Westbrook, this is a request, board review of a variance request from Jackson County Code Ordinance is section forty-three dash fifty-six. This is a request to, this was presented, presented to the Community Development Section, they reviewed the request. The request was provided to the Planning Commission on November the third, and the Planning Commission upheld the decision by Community Development to deny a variance, which is to have a secondary structure on a piece of property without a primary.
Correct, I represent Ms. Lisa Carmichael, this is Ms. Carmichael here. Yeah. Whereas basically, when the variance was not passed, basically, as a little bit of the background, this accessory building we call specialty building is behind a fence off of Silver Lake Drive. The reason, as I understand it, was reported that she had a little bit of electrical contracting work done, and as they're required, they made a report to Jackson County that there may be some permis court on this. The storage shed is basically three hundred and eighty-four square feet, it is a behind the fence, and without going inside, I don't even think anybody reported, but for the fact they went inside the fence. And Ms. Carmichael, she actually lived, where did you live at?
I lived in Indian Springs.
And because of health issues involved with her, and honestly, I did not attach, she does have a letter from a healthcare provider, I did not attach it to the variance application, but because of her health issue, she did downsize. It's actually where there's a RV pad with like a pole barn there, and basically there was one RV there, she bought the property from the previous owner, put the RV underneath the barn, and then brought the accessory building later on after that. And the reason she did that is because when she downsized, she didn't have enough room in, on her, on her property to store everything she had in her former home. And she bought the storage shed at three hundred and eighty-four square feet, because she thought she would comply, because I believe for an development order, it has to be four hundred square feet or above. And so she just asked for consideration on this to, you know, get, you know, go against the recommendation and give her the variance on the accessory building, because again, it's not really, you can't see it unless you're looking for what it boils down to, okay? And so, you got anything you'd like to say, Ms. Carmichael?
I know that code enforcement has to do their job, and I totally respect that, I'm not, I'm not trying to get around or anything like that, but I sold my home of twenty years when I was diagnosed with pancreatic cancer. I'm still bad on it, and I don't know exactly what steps I'll have to take to if I have to move this building. It can't be seen, I'm back there behind that fence, nobody can see me, and I'm not in a position where I, anybody even knows I'm back there, and I'm just asking for consideration, because this is a lot of stress that I honestly just can't take right now.
I can understand your, your point, well, well explained, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure I understand exactly the variance request. Is the request for the variance because the structure is not four hundred square foot, is only three hundred? Is it the request because it's a accessory structure on a piece of property without primary residence?
Yes.
There's actually two parts, two parts to the request.
The first part is that they're requesting to be able to place an accessory structure on the property without a primary structure, and they also have requested not to be required to get a development order in the event that they are allowed to place the accessory structure. So no development order was pulled for the accessory structure. The four hundred square foot thing is that they do not have to get a permit for a portable building that's placed on a property, but they still have to get development authorization. And you can see the shed from outside the fence, the code enforcement did not enter the property. You can see the roof, you can't see inside the shed or anything.
And so the reason for placing the storage shed there, even though you don't live there, is for what reason?
Just to put storage for thirty years of living in Indian Springs and raising my children.
Why didn't you place it on the property in Indian Springs?
I had to sell the house in Indian Springs when I came down with cancer. My meds come to around fifteen hundred dollars a month, they disabled me, which would decrease my income down to nineteen hundred and forty-four dollars a month.
So where are you residing?
I'm living in that, and then I was living part-time in my son's house in Panama City, which he has for sale and has an offer on at this point.
There's a RV on the property is where she's living now.
Yes, and that was where the previous owner lived and before that, that. I'm doing exactly, when I bought the property, it was with the understanding that I would be able to live there. I bought it right after Hurricane Michael, because my house was not available.
Is there a negotiation? Part of this?
Not that I'm aware of.
We'll, we'll do whatever y'all ask us to do, we'd like the variance, because she's just in a health issues right now with her dad and everything, that's what she's concerned with. I'll be honest, we talked about, you know, maybe giving her the extension of time to move it, she just, she said, I just don't know when I can do that, you know, and that's, that's her concern, is right now, because of what's going on with her and with her father.
You know, certainly, we've, we've run into this issue a number of times with persons living in RVs on properties without the intention of building a home, I know that's my problem, I'm not opposed to granting some type of extension, but I am opposed to issuing the variance on both, both cases.
I did want to point out, the reason that this is coming before you as a variance is there was a code case that was written up on the property, and it went to the magistrate, and the magistrate suggested that they may be able to get a variance to place the structure on the property. So they decided to pursue that avenue instead of pursuing compliance. We are willing, in the code enforcement case, to work with them on a timeframe, but no timeframe has been presented to us at this time.
If the variances were not granted, and we were willing to potentially give a time extension, and I know it's a hard question to answer for you with your circumstances, present circumstances, but would there be a amount of time that you would be able to rectify the situation?
Sir, I don't know, when I leave here, I'm going to a doctor's appointment for the pancreatic cancer, I don't know. I don't even know what five years down the road holds for me, and my dad is already on hospice. So I'm just, and, and it is true, you can see the roof of the building, but you have to stand in the back of a truck, it was.
Where's your, where's your father living?
My dad, my father lives there in Silver Lake as well.
On that property, on that property?
No, not on that property.
And I think, and it is her intent to build there, but her finances right now are such a state that she can't do that.
That is correct.
And, you know, and my biggest concern, we talked about times, is, you know, and I started thinking about, well, winter coming up, I mean, it's gonna be with her situation, it might be hard for her to get everything moved with being cold outside, raining and things like that. So, you know, that's why she's, she's just having a few problems here on that issue, you know, but, so we, we can make some, you know, some suggestions, I would certainly ask that whatever happens, that we push it back maybe into the springtime, and then see where we go from there, you know, so.
What, a hundred and twenty days would be, I'm sorry.
I would be in agreement with giving her ample amount of time to either move it or be in compliance with the code.
Yes.
Probably, yeah, spring of the year, March or whatever, anytime, I mean, I don't see anything wrong with that.
Yeah.
That's my motive. That's my motion.
A motion is second.
What was the motion?
Motion was to give her till spring or whatever time we agree on. If it's March, March to to move it or move it back and get in compliance, you know, to uh with a compliance to the bank.
Six months.
Six months, fine. Yep. So that help, yeah.
It will help us, variance would help us, but six months will be will be the next.
Okay, that's a motion.
Got a motion, second, that may the same Doc Spire.
That's Commissioner Westfield.
Okay, go right ahead. You 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 got the flow.
Be willing to add to that at certain stages. Seems to warrant it that we'll reevaluate it at six months.
We could do that, yeah. Depending on your health issues that get worse, we we could take a look at it in six months.
Appreciate it.
Then I'll second that.
That a motion is second to to give a delay for the hold off for six months before we ask to remove the house, whatever. All in favor, signify by saying uh all opposed to those things and we got that hair split. We have split that hair right down the middle.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on, uh Mr. Westbrook into section four. Uh section four, the first item is the consent agenda to pay the bills and approve the right-of-way use permits.
Offer a motion to approve the consent agenda is included in the uh agenda packet.
Motion and second to approve the consent agenda as printed. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Move along.
Uh Mr. Westbrook, the next item, item number two is request board approval of uh two JAG grants made available to the sheriff's office, uh D N G two one six and six M two five three. These grants were, the applications were previously approved and the grant agreements have been submitted from the state of Florida to the sheriff's department. Thirty-seven thousand oh two seven uh to the drug task force as well as forty-three thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty-two cent uh to the tactical team and uh task force. We're asking the board to approve the grant agreement.
You heard the recommendation. What's the board's question?
Offer a motion to approve the uh JAG grants from F D L E.
Got a motion and a second to approve the JAG grant. All in favor, signify by saying right hand. There you are. Move move along.
Hey, Mr. Westbrook, the next item, uh number three is a request board approval of nine-one-one grants uh for the sheriff's department. Uh this is a previously requested grant to the Florida Department of Law Enforcement. Grant number one is twenty-five dash one zero one two. The second grant is twenty-five dash one zero dash one three. Uh the first one is for G S G I S improvements and maintenance. Uh the second one is a nine-one-one recorder replacement project. The agreements were submitted to the county by the Florida Department of Law Enforcement, asking for board approval.
The moon is true. Got a motion?
Yes.
Got a second from Doc Spire. All in favor, raise your right hand for the grant through. All opposed, same sign. Move along.
Uh Mr. Westbrook, the next item is a board approval of a a notice of bid proposal for the uh cleaning services associated with both libraries and the health department. Uh there were only two uh proposals received. One proposal was received from Globo. The other was from uh Cohesive Enterprises. Uh it is noted in the agenda items that the staff has uh worked with Globo before. They were not satisfied with the services provided and performance of Globo. And uh but Globo is the uh low bid, low bidder at forty-nine hundred versus five thousand one hundred and nine dollars and sixty cent a month. And asking for board to make a selection so that we can engage their services.
What was specifically what?
Go ahead.
Specifically, what was the dissatisfaction uh revolving around? Uh just quality of work?
Quality of work, uh had a hard time maintaining schedules for some of the facilities that we have identified need to be done on select date. And then uh lack of uh stock and materials, I mean, you know, it's getting plenty to, you know, putting everything back in the ready, just overall quality. Or lack of.
It it's a it's a two hundred, two hundred and nine dollar difference per month, uh roughly about twelve hundred dollars per year. Um is it within the budgeted amount if we were to go with a higher bid?
Yes, yes.
Yes, sir, it is. And also, uh I will let you know that the cohesive bid is the current price that they are currently charging us. They have our current contract that we're that is expired. Same price as that.
I didn't quite understand. You said that that people we're dealing with now is the one that is not a pro suggestion.
Co cohesive is the current provider of the services and the uh price or the proposal that they made is exactly the same that we're paying them now. Is that correct?
And and we're we're satisfied with the service that we're receiving from cohesive.
Yes.
Well, certainly our prerogative to go with the uh uh there's nothing that mandates that we go with the low bidder. I'll offer a motion that we enter into a contract cohesive enterprises on the amount of five thousand one hundred and nine dollars sixty cent a month based on uh uh based on our satisfaction with their work and our dissatisfaction with Globo.
Thank you.
Got a motion and a second to approve for the higher bid? Any dissatisfaction with that, the other member? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Move them on.
True. Mr. Westbrook, the next item, number five, is a request board approval to solicit invitation to bid for deck or purchase of vehicles. This is uh a replacement vehicles for the current uh leased vehicles we have with Enterprise Rental Car, uh which we are not able to purchase those vehicles. We're asking the board to allow us to use the uh funds that we had generated from the sale of equipment as well as the savings that we realized with the purchase of the dump trucks and the backhoes to uh replace those leased vehicles with vehicles that we would actually purchase.
Do we do that with everything?
Uh it is our intent for the equipment that we have to purchase in February to per purchase rather than lease.
What's the board's pleasure?
Question, this question.
Sure, go right ahead.
You mentioned that's from the vehicles from the enterprise that are not available for purchase or is there sort of a prohibition?
Under the current agreement we have with them, Mr. Spires, uh we are not able to purchase those vehicles under the lease agreement that we entered into.
Purchase the vehicles back.
But there's nothing specific to enterprise policy that would prevent us from doing that if that clause was there.
I I'm not, I don't understand, Mr. Spires.
Yeah, okay, you're right. A lot of rental companies, they they offer vehicles for sale. And I'm saying with the enterprise, do they not do that? Do they not practice that?
And under the agreement that we executed five years ago, uh that was not available at that time. So the current lease that we have does not have the option to purchase those vehicles.
Thank you.
I I guess what you're asking is have have we talked to enterprise to see if?
Entertained?
Yes, sir, we have.
That's not a question.
That's not uh an option in the eyes of enterprise.
And are are all of these vehicles, um ones that were identified by the respective departments as being needed vehicles?
Yes, sir. This list has gone, uh our our staff, uh Rhett personally and uh several others have gone through this list multiple times. And this is the list that we've uh settled on as what we need to do.
I made a motion. Motion by Mr. Greg Field.
Thank you.
Thank you. By Mr. Branch. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Move along.
Uh, Mr. Westbrook, the next item is for approval to amend uh approval of amendment four to the endeavor museum cultural facility grant. This is not changing the grant. I'm gonna, it remains exactly the same. All this amendment does is shift money within the grant for purposes within the grant into different categories. So we're not changing the amount of the grant. We're not getting additional grant and we're not changing anything as far as the project from which you approved awarded. This just moves money around within the grant.
Now, this is item number six, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just want to clarify that.
Let's be able to do work. Let's be able to do work that probably by moving that is more necessary than.
Yes, sir. And the 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 way that they're doing the work, they changed it uh slightly so that, you know, it it didn't cost as much to put the concrete in, so with moving the savings over to another category.
Yeah, okay. I make a motion to approve it.
Got a motion to approve?
Question, Mr. Brad.
We but the monies are still the same monies from the state grant.
Yes, sir, and the T D C match.
Need a second.
Second.
You go ahead, go ahead.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. I've got a motion in a second to approve. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Yes.
Mr. Westbrook, the next item on the agenda is for approval of amendment amendment number three to the purchase sale agreement for the Pusa Road. Uh we'll call it, we refer to it as the housing property, two hundred plus acres. The purchaser has con made contact with us that they would like to extend that contract another thirty days. And um so we're bringing it to board for their approval. They had indicated in the email that they sent us that they were working on uh buttoning down their financing and they needed an additional thirty days.
This is the first extension or the second?
This is the second extension.
Do you do you smell a rat? That's my expression.
I I mean, it's it's a big, big undertaking. I I mean, we don't have any indication that there's an issue other than what they conveyed to us.
Where are we aware of their lender or is that private not for us or knowledge?
I don't recall who they identified is the that's doing their financing for.
And that, may I?
Yes, sir, go right ahead.
Do we have something spelled out in reference to liquidated damages?
I, you know, Mr. Spire, not gonna lie to you, I have not read that contract completely. Um but I'm not aware of any liquidated damages associated with that.
Are we under a time certain to do this?
Not that I'm aware of, uh unless the board.
Now, this is this is been an ongoing uh situation for several years now. Uh we started out with uh uh one company, uh went through that process with trying to get them to perform certain uh things. So we shifted from the original company to to this company. Now, this company is actually show uh started out Ross Coleman and is is uh sold to a different company. So I'm certain that there's some some logistical issues that are probably contributing to the extension and I'll I'll offer a motion to approve via amendment authorized you as chairman of science, Mr. Westbrook.
Go ahead, Doc Spire.
Jordan, were you involved in the development of this contract?
Um, yes, and I had recommended against working with this company. I saw some red flags early on.
You recall in reference to liquidated damages in the contract?
It's been uh probably years since I've looked at that agreement and this agenda item wasn't reviewed with me, so I'm not really prepared to answer that question.
Yeah, I I I don't recall there being any liquidated damage.
Do we, is there any requirement to them having a financial statement and us being privy to it?
There's any requirement they provide any financial.
Go right ahead, Greg.
Just information to the board. This was the sole bidder at the time when this RFP was put out. Um so just.
Was a year ago, wasn't it a completely different company?
I don't see where we're going to purchase them thirty more days. If they want to buy it. Purchase it.
At this point in time, uh they've got a lot of time invested in it. We've got a lot of time invested in it. Yeah, I I don't see an issue with another thirty days.
I'll second the motion.
Did I have a second motion?
I I made a motion.
That's what I thought. You kind of love. All right. All in favor of giving an extension, raise your right hand.
But without thirty days.
Okay.
That's what they asked for, I believe.
All right.
Uh, Mr. Westbrook, item number eight on the agenda is request for board approval of the agreed proposed agreement with Camp Real Life. Do your question remember? Number eight is the Camp Real Life Agreement. Uh this is a delinquent borrower for utility services and we have worked with them to try and uh resolve the delinquent account. Uh we are in need of a property associated with putting an elevated storage tank. And we have a, they have agreed to donate that property in exchange for the delinquent utility account. Uh so we've uh have a proposed memorandum that hopefully will lead to a formal contract with the company uh to uh trans transfer the property to the county in exchange for resolve of the delinquent account. There is one item uh in the agreement after a number of discussions internally. Uh as it relates to item number eight, we're striking the a portion of that sentence such that the nonprofit's equipment will be shielded from public view. Uh that's the only minor change we're asking for board approval subject to there being no other substantive changes.
I for one have worked right around the land at their Auburnus. It is very critical because there's not very much room to work there with the existing water in the system. I rebuilt that system with the county ten fifteen years ago. It uh it would be very nice to have more room there to have to work.
And and this, according to my conversations with you, Mr. Dean, this is a uh this is a a piece of property that is satisfactory for the use that we intend tended for.
Yes, no doubt about it. No doubt about it.
And and the the ten percent discount that we're agreeing to for sixty months, what approximately, what does that equate to? I know it varies from month to month, but uh.
Mr. Daniels, if he could do a calculation, it's ten percent of four to six thousand dollars, I think, but Mr. Daniels deals with it every day.
Forty-six thousand dollars is about.
And ten percent of four to six thousand.
Around five, so it varies four thousand to six thousand per month.
So four hundred, six hundred dollars per month is what we'd be discounting their their utility rates for for sixty months.
Third down.
Over the period of of life or the or the term.
What's the board's pleasure?
And this is a half acre of property, yeah?
That's the estimate.
I move uh to approve the memorandum agreement authorized you so.
Got a motion? Got a sec, got a second. Pardon me. Got a motion and a second to approve the memorandum. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Move along.
Mr. Westbrook, uh item number nine is a modification to the ranking committee for the RFP, RFP for legal services. We are asking board to remove uh Mr. Sims and Miss Applewhite and we're replacing them with uh Judge Woodrow Hatch.
All right, what's the board's pleasure? So the ranking committee then would be uh Judge Hatcher, uh Mr. Bonrapp, the public defender Herman Lairmore and Mr. Branch.
And Mr. Branch and Mr. Hatch.
Yes, may I ask a question? Did the other two individuals decline? Did they decline the position of being on father rate committee?
Um there was a combination of a couple of things, mister, because there was two of them. Uh it was, uh I Uh, it was, uh, identified that the public defender, there may be a conflict associated with him being the public defender in uh certain cases that the public defender's office handles. Uh, so, and out of an abundance of precaution, we asked that he be removed and then Ms. Applewhite has declined.
Okay. Uh, again, who selected this committee?
It was a joint effort of staff.
May I, what position, I don't know if there are any names, what, what departments?
Uh, the administrative services, myself, and um, the, I, I would say that that's probably it.
We can just you?
No, sir, the, it was, it, it, some of the administrative services staff and myself.
Okay.
And again, this is only a ranking committee, there is no decision-making problem associated with ranking.
Right, thank you.
Offer a motion to approve the uh modified ranking committee as proposed and as listed in the uh agenda packet.
Got a motion, Doc, I'll entertain a second from somebody.
I second.
I can second it, sir.
I can second it, I'm on the, one of the ones, I second.
That's fine, I second. All in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed. It passed at three, too.
Next item, the, uh, the additions to the agenda, Mr. Westbrook.
Yes, sir.
Uh, starting with uh item number ten is a request board approval. Distribution to physically, is a distribution to physically constrained counties, which was submitted by uh the property appraiser. I don't know if Ms. Rebecca Morris paid, yes, if, I believe she wanted to present.
Come right on it.
Excuse me, good morning, commissioners and, and Mr. Chairman. Um, the physically constrained application is a yearly thing that I provide to y'all in order for you to be able to get funds back from the state. And it has to be signed and to them by the fifteenth of November.
Offer a motion that we approve the submission of the application.
Got a motion, got a second, all in favor, signify by saying right, raising your right hand.
Thank y'all.
All opposed.
Next item, Mr. Westbrook.
Yes.
Item number eleven, uh, this is a request uh from the property appraiser uh to return the excess funds that were uh not used in the previous fiscal year, that will carry over the funds, putting them back into the property appraisal budget. My understanding that this, this has done, been done before.
Yes, sir.
And we're asking for board approval to do so.
All right.
Make a motion to approve it.
Have a motion to approve, second, Mr. Branch is the second, all in favor, signify by raising your right hand, all opposed, same sign. Thank you for saying about our money, Miss Hay.
Thank y'all, appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Next item, Mr. Westbrook, item number twelve is a request to rat- ratification for the termination of the contract with uh legal services for Jackson County Board of County Commissioners.
What's the board's pleasure?
Well, I'll uh, I'll address the commission on this real briefly, um. You know, I've, I've served, I guess, not taking into account Commissioner Spire's uh previous uh service on the commission. I've served the last five years, so I guess I'm kind of have served longer than anybody else. During that time, I've had an opportunity to uh, to work uh with uh Michelle or the county attorney. And uh, I've always found Ms. Jordan to uh, uh, to be professional, to be thorough. Um, this whole, and we started out with um our concern about uh, about the fees that she was charging and the fact that she had proposed uh, uh, an increase in her retained amount and her increase in her hourly rate. Uh, at that time, I had proposed instead of issuing an RFQ uh to do some research to see whether the fees that she was proposing uh were in line with what other rural counties were paying. Uh, however, the, the board did elect to go ahead and move forward with an RFQ. Well, since that time, it seems like there has been, and I'm certainly not pointing any fingers at uh anyone, it seems like there has been um a degradation uh in the relationship between our attorney and certain members of uh our, our administrative staff. And uh, there's been a little bit of a degradation in uh, uh, the relationship between uh our attorney and uh some of the commissioners. And I think it's become uh obviously an untenable situation, uh one that's uh, uh, not really acceptable. And again, not pointing any fingers at anybody, but uh it's, it's become apparent that uh I think we, we need to, to move forward with this action. And again, I've got a lot of respect for Michelle, I think she's done a, a good job. I'm not sure what's uh prompted all of this uh situation uh to transpire. But uh, again, I think it's a, you know, it's, it's an un- untenable situation and one that we need to get past. And to that being said, I'll offer a motion to uh move forward with termination.
I like some of Mr. Chairman's information.
Go right ahead.
Mr. Dean, you indicated on your memo that this was without cause, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Donoford, you just gave several reasons for agreeing with the request to terminate. Is that in keeping with your thinking?
There, we are terminating the contract under the uh, the language of the current contract where we have the ability to terminate it without cause.
So Mr. Donoford's comments reflect his thinking, this is not what you were thinking as what's causing, he listed several causes.
Yes, uh, my intent was to present this i- in a way that we would terminate the, the contract without cause.
What are your intentions for legal services to an interim period?
There, a- as I understand the contract, the, this termination would go into a, there would be ninety days from the end of this month in which uh Ms. Jordan would provide legal services to the county. And we have the RFQ out there at this point and should be finalized within thirty to sixty days. So under the without cause paragraph, the services by Ms. Jordan are still available for ninety days from the end of this month.
I'm bothered by the fact that this comes so soon after the consultation from the last bid, that certainly reeks of vindications here, being vindicated. That's, that's my concern.
Mr. Gretschel?
Oh, I wasn't in the intent, I, I'd like to know what other county we're paying, but the intent was not go out for a bid. But since it's already RFQ, it's going out, come go out for bid for her to be able to bid, we're gonna have to cancel the contract. I would think for, to, to, to be able to even, you know, look and maybe hire her back or hire somebody up the back or whatever, i- isn't that the case? I mean, if, if we can't hardly hire somebody else and she's still under contract. I mean, if you're going out to bid, then you gotta look at the bid way I look at it.
Yes, sir, I mean, until the bids are in, until the.
I don't know where I'm reflecting on her, but if, if, if it's gonna be going out to bid basis and that's what pass to do, and she's allowed to bid too. And uh, but to be able to select a bidder, we gotta cancel her contract. I mean, if she got a contract already, isn't that?
There is a contract.
I was gonna say, we'd have, we really don't have much choice on the matter on that for us, I don't think, you know, for you know, what are they gonna do away with the RFQ? And keep her contracted.
Depends. I'm just waiting, you finish, I don't wanna speak, I'm waiting.
Totally, I'm through.
Well, there's been a lot of accusations and people mentioning stuff, especially about me. And uh, as best as what I have looked at, I don't see any truth in any of them. But anyway, my, my position is not what somebody says about me, I can take care of that in time. But I will say that the expense of it and the cost of it is, in my opinion, astronomical. We've just gone through a budget situation where we were lacking about a million dollars, a million one, something like that. So I myself always want to be uh in the point of saving or making uh less cost for what it takes this board to operate. And we certainly have, I've talked with several people, different ones, it's kind of in and out. But uh, at the same time, I think we need to be very, very careful about the money we spend. And that's where I'm coming from, I'll deal with the accusations at a later time. Go ahead.
Well, a- as everybody knows, uh, I, my original thought on this was simply to find out if we could get services cheaper or better or not. Uh, made it no secret, and then uh I'm proponent of bid process. Since then, uh, some things have come out and I'm not going to comment on them right now. But uh, I just think we need to move forward and seeing what else is out there, or I should say, who else is out there, but firms are the, out there, including Ms. Jordan. Uh, she wants to bid them, but I think we need to be in a bid process mindset. That's just, that's just my thoughts on.
Yes, sir, Dr. Spire. If I'm wrong, but I think you asked for termination, is that right?
The termination of the contract.
Would that preclude the source from competing?
No, sir, it does not.
Okay, I just want to say this, I'm just gonna say it, I think our financial world extends far, far beyond what we're paid for legal service, guys, so keep that in mind. That's all I have to say.
I, I, let me say this, I agree with Dr. Spire, we've got other problems, but we gotta start somewhere. Great. I mean, if we save here, save there, that's money we saved. And, and maybe we can't save money with this.
I'm gonna agree.
I'm saying, let us have the opportunity to look at it.
Oh, I'm not, 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 not knocking that. You always been pretty consistent about wanting to see what other foes are, and I respect that.
That's, that's just my feelings, isn't it?
I move to approve this.
I, I actually made a motion to move forward with.
Yeah, you did.
Termination.
You did, you did, you did.
If there's another second.
I'm sorry, my fault.
I second it.
I have a motion and a second to honor what the mo- what the, excuse me, what, yes, I want.
Move forward with termination.
Termination or assets.
The terms of the contract.
I'm, I'm not uh opposed to Ms. Jordan but uh bidding on the, on, I'm just like with Mr. Branch, I'm not opposed to that whatsoever. So, I'm bringing that, that motion, all in favor, signify by, go ahead.
This is Donoford, effective when? When, when is this termination effective? Did you include effective date of motion?
I did not.
You did not?
In accordance with the contract, and as I understand the contract, Mr. Spire's, uh, there, there's a ninety day um timeframe and it begins at the end of this month after the ratification.
Can you calculate what the termination date will be?
The end of this month, uh, if it's the thirtieth, then uh the ninety days starts at the end of this month, according to the contract.
I guess the message is.
You're talking about the end of, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, that'd be, come on, there about.
If it's November, December, January, February, it would be around the first of March, would begin the contract.
There about.
Fourth of March.
Can we nail that down to a specific date, March what, fourth, third, fourth?
I think, I think ninety days would be good for the twenty-sixth.
Thank you.
From the end of the month?
From the end of November.
You have ninety days. December thirty-one days.
Thirty-one days.
Days.
Up to March.
And then.
Up to March.
Well, I know there's, there's thirty-one days in December, thirty-one days in January, that's sixty-two days.
Wow, and, and.
So it would be, it would be the first of March, sorry.
And we count a weekend still, right?
Yeah, well, I'm assuming.
Yeah, well, oh, counting, a week around workday.
Is that a, a March the first?
I, I'm, I'm okay with that, I just want to be clear.
Okay, I just want to make sure we had the right number there, just not trying to hurt nobody's feelings, I'm just trying to get it down where we, we all know the same number.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
She's still be eligible to bid.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Because I know we're going out for a bid, so that's why I think.
Yep.
For, for, I mean, how you gonna select a bid and you still got a contract? Where my feelings is not that I would wanna, you know.
Contract, that would affect you at the end of the, of contract period.
And then I gotta say this to you.
Go ahead, Dr. Spire, you want to speak again, go ahead.
If my employer terminates me, then what kind of harm do I have to get hired? But that, that's never left, who, who, who for?
If I may talk for just a moment, I'm the chair. I, I'm not interested in nothing but having the best person for the best price. And I want to show that, please, on the record. I'll deal with all that other private stuff, I'll deal with it, I know just how to do it, thank you.
And I gotta say this, if I may, when you use the term the best person, it bothers me because how do we determine the best person? We, we have, we can say we hired a qualified individual.
Well.
But, but the best, this, this kind of relative, you can't say it's the best.
I would assume that what the person is gonna be on that request or proposal, I would, I would assume that some of them had some knowledge of what we are looking for and answer to your question.
Sure, but to hire qualified individuals, but you can't say the best, but we have.
Okay, well, you want me to change my.
No, no, I see that, I, I'm just giving you my opinion about.
Let's get it square, we all have an understanding, we leave this meeting right now, that's what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna get it square before I leave this place.
Well, can I use your business for example? Now, I can't say I have the best will to hire someone who's qualified.
Well, I don't know the will to really be qualified to tell, but I would be a business person to qualify.
I think we're business, we, we talk about two different things, I think, okay, let it go.
Are you satisfied now?
Not really, without.
Okay, well, keep talking, you're good.
I think. When I'm here, that when you say this best, it, it, it leaves a lot of questions to be answered, just say we hire someone who's qualified, you know? I'm qualified as a therapist, so are other people, but I can't say I'm the best.
Well, and just to bring it to a point, you've had one president that got eighty million votes and the other one got about seventy, you know, sixty. So that's the same thing, the people may qualify, the people may recognize that, some people may be wrong. But how, how do we, how do we do that beyond the point of, of question?
Okay, I'm, I'm serious, I, I don't think we want to take page, but that's okay. Thank you.
Jimmy, you got somebody in the back of the audience?
Go right ahead. Yes, ma'am, you may. Come on to the front, ma'am.
How are y'all today?
And you, we got you.
I'm, I'm well.
We're glad to.
My name is Sheila Ellis. Um, I, I have one question, if you're wanting to terminate Ms. Jordan's contract and Mr. Dean is primarily reviewing most documents that go to legal and saving money, are you thinking that perhaps maybe a part-time attorney is what you're looking for to save money for the county?
Maybe we even looking for a full-time.
Perhaps, but you do have a qualified full-time attorney that Mr. Dean is doing the majority of the, of reviewing legal.
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am, but Mr. Dean is our.
Yes, sir, and I understand that.
And we have confidence in him, so.
Yes, sir, and you don't have all this.
He's not, he, he's not on trial, is he?
No, sir, I understand that, it's a simple question. And I am allowed, allotted three minutes, am I not?
Yes, ma'am, you do, you are, you take up, and when we ask your question, we'll extend your time.
Well, I appreciate that, sir, but that's just a question I have. If we're all concerned about saving money for the county and Mr. Dean primarily does all the reviewing of any legal documents, then what's the purpose of a full-time attorney? any legal documents, then what's the purpose of a full-time attorney?
I'm not, I'm not sure I can answer that.
I don't know that, Mr. We're asking Mr. Dean to review all of the.
I think he's taking it upon himself.
We're not, we're not under question right here, not, not at all, I understand.
I was gonna say that we're not asking Mr. Dean and his position as the administrator to review all documents, uh, my point was that there are some legal documents that uh Mr. Dean has the confidence in being able to review, and not all of those need to go to uh legal for review, but those documents that Mr. Dean feels that are above his capacity to review, then those need to be sent to uh to uh legal for review, and and I have confidence that Mr. Dean knows the difference between those that he can review and those that he needs assistance with, does that answer your question?
Somewhat, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anything else on this agenda?
We voted yet on.
We have not voted yet.
Okay, let's vote.
We got a motion.
We do, and a second. All in favor of that, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, you care for the one. Thank you.
Westbrook, we do have a request from Ms. Cop- Copelman uh to speak, I don't know if she's on Zoom or YouTube, but she has asked someone to place her name on the request to speak.
Okay, you're recognized, come.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, I want to speak on um the attorney situation, um, I know I spoke last time, I am kind of not understanding um why y'all are putting out um bids, knowing that I've done the research for the higher bids, and and you got a qualified attorney, like Mr. Spire said, not best, but qualified attorney, and I'm also agreeing with the lady that just spoke, you put Mr. Dean in a position and you didn't put out a bid for Mr. Dean, but you're paying him high dollars, and all she was wanting was a little raise, because to go along with inflation and to go along with what everybody is making out there when they work, so I I don't agree with this, and and I think that, you know, e- even though I understand what I've been sitting here listening to y'all all say, that she's done nothing wrong, but I feel, and I'm a citizen, and I know there's other people out there that feel the same way, that voted y'all in and everything, that y'all just gonna terminate the contract and put out a bid to hire, and y'all are saying that you can't afford to pay her the little raise, but you're going to get, you know, somebody that's gonna ask you, hey, I I ain't gonna work for nothing, I ain't gonna work for chicken feed, so I just don't understand why y'all gonna vote this through and everything, but I just wanted y'all to know, just remember, election's coming up for, I don't know whoever's seat, but when your time comes up for election, I know a person in every district, so I'm just saying, just remember that, you know, you pointed the county administrator, but you didn't give a bid for him, and that that's my question, why? I understand you were going in a budget, but that's no reason you could hire, you could have hired an intern until you could have put it out for bid, so you could have put Mr. Dean in the spot and then still put his job out for bid if he did not qualify with what the county needs, and I think you ought to respect the citizens that that they should do everything for bid, but it should be fair and it should be everybody's job for bid, not just terminate the attorney and not put other people's job out for bid, and also I think that with the decision of the whoever makes, you know, on that board to view whatever, to rank, that shouldn't have been made by, that should have been made by somebody that's mutual, that's on neutral ground, instead of people within the administration.
Are you finished?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. Any other, anything else need to be brought forward, both?